It will open this meeting of the Maynard Select Board as scheduled. And I guess the first order of business is the budget legion, so if everyone could stand and join us.
Budget Legion, to comply of United States of America. Through the repromis, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Then we will get into our script, our remote script. Good evening, this open meeting of the main and select board is being conducted live with Zoom as well. And any speakers on the agenda will be that will be participating remotely. And we may allow for the public to provide comments. The select would like to hear public comments, and if there is further action that is required by the board, chair, meeting manager will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, if they are able within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and up participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public. The meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast individual attendees unless otherwise required by law. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, so please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the meeting materials for this meeting are available on board docs. Except any executive session materials. And we recommend that the members of the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless the chair notes otherwise. We will now turn to the first agenda. First item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If there are any response, please wait until the chair deals the floor to you. And state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comments. After the members have spoken, the chair may afford public comments as follows. Here will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes per comment. Public comment for public hearings will only be accepted in person per open meeting law. So we now move on to the first item on the agenda, and that is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening online? In the room? Okay. Number two, which is our weekly consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I want to approve the consent agenda items A through E as presented contingent upon completion of all necessary requirements. Here are all federal, state, local, public health and safety guidelines. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Okay, great. This the the bottom of that move to approve the use of community events. Do we?
That would be a.
Stuff remote, okay. On the first part of motion. Items A through E, does anybody have any comments on A through E in the consent agenda this evening? Okay, here we will comment, you will call for a vote. All those in favor. Would somebody like to make a motion on the second part of this?
I'll move to approve the use of community event account toward the town's personal cost in support of the menorah lighting ceremony on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Are there any questions or comments upon the use of community events account for the menorah lighting?
The only question I have is, um, do we have an accounting of what, um, I I know we don't have it right this second, but how much we're leaning on that account? I feel like we're, we've been, we've used that for a few things now, or you've used it for a few things.
Actually bringing it up because the accounting office keeps that online, so.
Oh, yeah.
You need that bar, started with a budget of eight thousand, you spent one thousand one hundred fifty-two, you have six thousand eight hundred forty-seven left.
Any other questions on regards to that? All those in favor? Item number three on the agenda is licensing. Greg, here's the typical.
I just to, first I want to think that have a second to commend Greg Wilson for all his hard work on all this site, it's a lot to track up. And especially when we have something like this, so then I don't recall in my tenure with the town that we asked the board to approve of literally license, the taxi cab license, though it can have to do with me as well. Um, but we do have the applicant with us. Mister Sentongo?
Uh, Joshua Sentongo, please.
Very good. Thank you so much for joining us.
Welcome.
So, uh, so this is a delivery license, taxi cab license, um, but it's two actions that we're asking for to consider. One is is to start the license, and the second one is to renew it in twenty twenty-four. And in a short period of time, that's that's just a timing played out.
Um, so, okay.
Okay, no, go ahead.
No, so we're voting to accept that, you know, create the license, accept the license, and then move to approve it for next year.
That's it.
Okay, all right. Um, would anyone like to make a motion from the first pile of licensing? Item number four, three.
Before we do that, um, I'd like to hear a little bit about the this new license that we're approving for, uh, I assume it's a taxi company of some type? Or is it something different than that? Can you tell us a little bit about where you're located, what your area is, et cetera?
That was to you, Mr. Sentago, can you?
Mr. Sentago?
Yes, please.
Yeah, just a little bit, um, if you could, I'm just interested in knowing, um, about your business a little bit. Uh, your business model, what, uh, you know, where, what your area is that you cover, where your vehicles or vehicles or vehicles plural may be kept. Uh, exactly, a little bit about your business.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, so, um, Transit LLC, uh, true to its name. Majorly is located in Maynard, one hundred one, uh, Great Park Road. Uh, so there will only be keeping at least two cars as we grow our fleet. But, uh, if you realize, uh, one of the reasons why we call it actually transit beyond transiting people is to provide employment and easy access for people sometimes who are still, um, transiting between jobs. So our model is has an aspect of it of providing a bridge. Uh, bridge employment, especially for people what are transiting into other sorts or trying to locate themselves. That 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 is the heart of it. At the core, I'm a film producer. So during the recent, uh, riot, uh, I started to Uber and I, uh, a couple of months back, and I realized, and this was a very, um, it was really, uh, uh, an ideal transit uh, opportunity of employment for me, but I realized that there were more needs, uh, within the transport sector. And so, um, uh, in regard to, uh, even the Maynard area, that if someone, for example, is uh, asking for dispatch transport, they have to call from Concord or Sadbury, and that raises the cost a little bit. So it has different aspects that are relevant to the community. Uh, one, uh, lower dispatch costs if, uh, for those who prefer private transportation too. Uh, the ease of, uh, what I I call, uh, transit employment. That is typically the model and the heart of it.
Okay, so two vehicles at this point?
Uh, uh, right now, we are finishing the registration of the second probably tomorrow, so there are two vehicles at this point, but um, you know, uh, with, we we have sound relationships with uh, different, uh, car companies. So depending on, you know, as the business grows and as we put our foot on different aspects of the ecosystem, uh, there is opportunity for us to grow cause of our relationships.
Okay, great. Um, and you you said your address, one oh, is it, was it one oh one Great Road?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right.
Okay, does anybody have any more questions? Josh, Joshua? All right, um, would anybody like to make a motion on the second, the first?
Move to accept and approve the delivery license number L two oh two three dash zero one to Joshua Sali Sentongo at one oh one A Great Road, Maynard, Massachusetts, zero one seven five four. Contingent upon completion of all necessary requirements, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Okay, um, last chance, any questions? All those in favor? Okay. Um, second, there's a second motion for the renewal from the year twenty twenty-four, someone like to make it.
I'll move to approve the twenty twenty-four delivery license renewal for Joshua Sally Sentongo, authorizing his digital signatures approved.
Good luck, Joshua.
Uh, th- thank you, sir, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, next we have item number four. Contracts to discuss. Greg, you wanna?
Yeah, we can, so, um, this is actually kind of exciting because this is part of the transition from the design base to the construction base. So we're joined this evening, uh, in regards to the three metal elementary school. We're joined this evening with Phil Fallow, our, our owner's project manager from Colliers. And Chris Block, who's with Mount Vernon Group, our architect. But it's two different, um, contracts, and the the order doesn't really matter, but in in the agenda just happens to be that it's Mount Vernon Group followed by the Colliers. Um, but, uh, Phil and Chris were good enough to provide information to the school voting committee, and now we can carry it with you this evening, um, just to outline what that transition is. Again, from the design to construction closeout in particular. So that's, that's, that's the big picture stuff. Um, Phil or Chris, do you wanna add to that?
Well, you hit it, Greg. So ultimately, the way it's executed is, it would be amendments to both, you know, Colliers feasibility study contract. And then Mount Vernon Groups would be an amendment to their feasibility study contract, so it's, it's an amendment to, like Greg said, continue on through the rest of design, bidding, construction, and project closeout.
And these, and just to clarify, um, I don't think it's a surprise to you, Phil or Chris, but but these, these costs are funded within within the debt exclusion that was captured within the debt exclusion that was asked by.
Yeah, cor- correct. So the values incorporated in both proposals are the values that were carried in our budget submission to the MSBA. And and our capture in the town approval, yeah.
Okay. All right, um, I guess, does anybody have any questions for either Phil or Chris before we, um, move forward? Okay, would anybody like to move, make a motion on the, on item A and or A, Mount Vernon Group?
I'll move to approve amendment number three with Mount Vernon Group Architects for the MSBA Design Big Build Designer Contract in the amount six million, one hundred ninety thousand dollars that presented, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Okay, um, do a second.
Second.
Okay. Um, did we have any questions? Any follow up? All right, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. And then, um, a motion for Collier, are there any questions? For Collier? All right, maybe we want to make a motion for the Collier contract.
I'll move to approve amendment number one with Colliers Project Leaders for Owner Project Manager Services for the Green Meadow Elementary School Project in the amount of two million, one hundred forty three thousand seventy-five dollars as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures approved.
Give me a second.
Second.
Thank you. Um, again, last chance for any questions for Colliers Project Leaders? Having none, all those in favor? Thank you guys both for coming up.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item C under contracts is the, um, LRTA operating agreement for twenty four, FY twenty-four.
It's right, so this is a standard practice, um, and we are, so, uh, this is the agreement that we have. We are the contractor in this case, um, for the we are the the outskirts of the local regional, if you will, but we've been a good partner with them and really glad to be included in that agency for government usually been with them, at least my tenure, but I don't know how many years before that. And this sort of spelled out that agreement, so, um, this is not to a cost of the town, this is sort of clarified that services are going to be provided to us. Um, primarily their support for the vans and shuttles that you see. And I've been really grateful for their support over these last years. So, so this is relatively straightforward. It's the it's not quite consent, um, but it's kind of there.
Okay. Is this the one where we were having trouble finding a driver at one point, or am I confusing that something else?
That is not related to this, though. So the owners find drivers on us, but the, they support our operations in that sense. So even the vans you see, like you will notice is that they'll say LRTA on the side. Yeah, we'll, I don't, if you look for it, you might see, and that's, that's because that's the relationship we have. They they support us when our vans are down.
Okay.
They were actually really supportive right before the pandemic, our, our shuttle system to back and forth to the transition was so popular. We actually needed more pills from them, and they were quick to to help us out with that. Times have changed, and and as you all know, our show rate is significantly lower, but, um, they that's, there's still been a team. And I go to their meetings monthly if I can.
Okay. All right, does anyone have a motion? You'd like to me?
I'll move to approve the operating agreement with the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, LRTA, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four in the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars nine hundred. I'm sorry, eighty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety dollars.
Give me a second. Okay. Uh, any questions other than what Greg already stated? Okay, all those in favor? All right, great. Our annual election for twenty twenty-four?
Yep. Already that time again, so, um.
We just got out of, we just got out of the booth a couple days ago.
So, so I really appreciate that the board traditionally has set the date of town meeting. And I know that's a nice topic, but town meeting in December about the time. Um, and looking at the town in the spring's, um, schedule though, for town meeting as well as the election, because they they line up accordingly. And discussing with the town clerk's office, that's kind of what leads to, and the charters provide us all the information kind of dictates what this schedule looks like. Unless the board will like to deviate, I'll explain why the board might want to. So if there is an expectation that there's another debt exclusion vote in the spring for the alumni field bleachers, then typically, the the expectation is that you have a town meeting, just like we did for the elementary school. And kind of advocating to explain what the, what the vote will be at a, you know, weeks later at the polls to, which is the second legislative action to vote, to vote, to override your taxes, to do the execution. So what I'm proposing to you tonight, which again is just because of how the dates are are set according to those different regulations. Um, in this case, if there is going to be a doubt, we should consideration. These two, these two motions would set it the the opposite of what we just saw for the elementary school. So it would be the, it would be the the poll. So the question that the polls will take place first, because we would add like, we try not to like kind of overwhelm and have too many elections, so we would add that, that question to, to the, to the standard local election battle, and then we would have town meeting, um, two weeks later. So a little complicated, it's not ideal, but that's, but again, it's, you can do it like that. Just need the two legislative actions within a certain period of time within each other, but it's not. But that's the usual expectation, again, is you do town meeting, tell all the voters to come back in a couple weeks to vote. But maybe, maybe the board wants, first of all, we don't have to decide it tonight, but secondly, if the board feels so strongly one way or the other, we can, we can go back and figure out how we could maybe adjust these schedules. I just, I don't know how the board feels.
Uh, my thoughts personally, I don't care which order, which order it goes, then vote first or town meeting vote second or whatever, it might just be confusing for voters, but more importantly, um, I'm looking for the cost savings on having to run it separate. That's what we would have to do. And, uh, you know, I remember from back when we were not recently, but when we used to have to talk about how much having an election would be, um, you know, not cheap.
Nope.
Um, so I would think that we would do what we can to avoid having to have a second election. And when you have municipal elections that have minimal attendance anyway, perhaps to get more voters out, but having two within a month or whatever seems to make zero sense.
I don't love the idea of having the vote first, um, just because I feel like, uh, I don't necessarily, I mean, I I understand David's point and I when push comes to shove, I don't see the point in in paying for another election, but at the same time, I'm concerned that 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 exclusion would pass, because if you have a vote before you have the actual town meeting, when the conversations happen and most of the people get involved, I don't necessarily know that you'll have the response that you want to pass the exclusion. But that's just my own, but I don't, I don't know. I mean, I I know other towns have done this in the past, so I'm not sure what their history is with it like that.
I guess, I, my, my question is this, is that I agree with both the comments from David and Justine about having a technical election in the cost and all that. But if I have my election first, how do I know what I'm voting on? Like, what dollar, what dollar amount am I voting on? If I'm a voter, can't the dollar amount change before town meeting? What if, what if, so if we, if if we as a, if we as a community have a vote prior to town meeting, and we vote in a debt exclusion, it's gonna have to list them a dollar specific, correct?
Sure.
Okay, so, so what if we get to, um, this, the town meeting?
Yeah.
And on the floor of town meeting, somebody's disgruntled because we don't have four bathrooms instead of three in the the building that they want to attach, or we don't, you know, they want to make it a turf field and they increase the, 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 the ask. Well, how does that then go back in effect? How does, how does, if someone wants to make a motion like that?
Yeah.
Right, which is not inconceivable, given some of the recent citizen petitions we've seen, you know, in in recent past. And if someone makes a, a suggestion like that and it's, and it's passed.
Yeah.
Does that not nullify the other vote because it's, it was a dollar specific vote?
No, I I agree with that, with that kind of thought exercise, but it, that, that sort of gamble, so to speak, comes in whenever you have I mean, all the same town meeting, but particularly with that, it could have, that even could have happened with the elementary school. We, we actually, the, the town clerk was a little bit hesitant even because it takes a lot of action ahead of time to prepare for an election, including literally printing ballots. And so she wanted to know from me, can we go forward with how, how the wording was going to be ahead of time? Because if she also didn't want to waste anyone's time or money by having, you know, hosting the election, it did fail to town meet. So as the weeks kind of came up to it, and I felt more and more confident that like, okay, but I'm not, no, we're not going to go to town meeting. And I, and, and still, for whatever tea leaves I could read, I felt like, okay, we have, there's a good strong chance to get a pass to town meeting, so yes, print the ballots, get it ready, so we can execute the election. Um, but, you know, the, the vote will be, um, you know, we'll try to be conservative, and I, and I have a lot of confidence, especially with, with what I'm hearing with this, uh, with, with the, um, designer that we have on board now. And and well, Phil, not anymore, but he's our project manager. I feel pretty confident that we'll have a, a, a good estimate. Conservative of as to what the cost of bleachers is going to be. So if someone were to pitch something at town meeting, it would be, if, I, like, I don't know how informed that that pitch will be to change the ballot, I mean, to change the wording. I also suspect, you know, the school committee had the heavy influence in this particular topic. So if, if we want, we can go back and and ask the school committee if they are, if they're kind of confident in this, in this order, you know, this order of election, then tell me whether they want to switch. But I, I would hope that they would, and and anyone else in the audience at town meeting would say like, no, this is what we came up with. This, this alumni field tax force came up with this, with the designer and the project manager, this is it. I would hope that before we got to the spring, everyone was on the same page.
When, um, we talked about the, um, I'm going to Chris's point about dollar numbers on the, on the ballot.
Yeah.
Um, I thought that when, that when we voted to approve the ballot for the school, I specifically asked why there was no number on there. But we were told it didn't have to have a number on them.
But for me, I'm, I'm not trying to, so the school's language is very dictated by the MSBA. I'm actually trying to remember what the fire station is, you said. Um, and that I don't recall what the ballot on.
I, I, I always thought we needed to have a dollar amount, but, um.
But it comes from town, actually, I, I don't.
Yeah.
Can we, can we find that out?
Yeah.
All the dollars work on that, just if we're not, not in a rush. Because like, it, I'm to your point, if, like, what you were just saying in the beginning of your last set of comments was, I'm gonna try and estimate conservative. And I'm gonna try and put a good number there.
Yeah.
So if you put a good number there and it's a couple hundred thousand dollars over what Colliers comes in at, and you say, okay, we can do it for this, but we're, we've asked, we've printed the ballot, we've asked the ballot, and ballot's asking for X.
That's how we are for the first.
Right, so now we've approved this number, up to, up to, up to this number.
That's right.
But Colliers comes back and says, oh, great, we got, we found a, a new something on it, we can save the two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
At town meeting, uh, there's that gap in there, and I'm just worried about who's going to try and fill that gap with what and tie it onto the project.
Well.
Because that's going to happen.
That could be, but if, but okay, the fire station is, then to kind of clarify, the fire station, we asked for sixteen million dollars. And then we went to bid, you know, because you don't go to a bid unless you know where the lights can come from. So, so we went to bid and we found out, oh, it was going to be fourteen something like that. Right, because for whatever time we struggled on iron pot, and with the steel was cheaper, I can't remember the different parameters. So, so like initial contracts was lower, it was going to be good. Um, but I'm not like, eat, so eat, the, the contracts and the cost of those contracts is outside of town. Town meeting was only authorizing you to negotiate and and operate as a contract. But, but, so someone tries to be project scope creep or whatever, what have you, that's not a town meeting. Because that's, that's, that's a conversation for you, that's the contract, that's. But it might happen.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just playing devil's advocate because I'm, I'm listening and I, I don't think that you know, I'm not, I'm not being critical, but I just don't think that comparing a fire station to this project is a thing, because as we've seen, there's you know, people involved in this project have, um, self-designed on that money, or self-driven to have certain things done. Whereas the fire station, who, who, who was selfish about the fire station, maybe the fireman and a couple of people in the committee who were ex-firemen. But in this instance, you've got a line of people who've got nothing but negative to say, and we want this and we want that, if they see that there's a gap available through the vote, I'm just worried about that. So can we just get clarified that from, from whoever that if Colliers says here's our contract amount, that's what it is, there is no change to co- Colliers number.
Sure.
And then.
The debt exclusion for the fire station also has the same information, and the, the, the question does not give a dollar value.
It was a question.
Just a question.
Oh, that was for the.
Allow the town to be exempt from provisions of prostitution two and a half. The amounts required to pay for the bonds to be issued to pay for the cost for the construction.
But that was for the ballot. Not for.
Correct, that was the ballot.
At, at town meeting, our call was.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We talked about.
Yeah, the town, town meeting certainly has the number.
Correct, but it, but that again goes back to if you're if you're asking for people to vote. If you're asking for a ballot vote ahead of the approval at town meeting, you're asking for a ballot vote with no money attached. So you're basically saying that the town is going to give where they can pay whatever they want.
But, but they are the town.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know.
And then, and then it would require a two-thirds approval at town meeting.
At town meeting, yeah. Again, it's a harder stuff, but.
All valid points, I just don't know that we're not leaving an unnecessary loose end out there. By doing it a certain way, and I don't know, I could just be worried for nothing, but what, what, so.
We're not making an amount on the.
Right, right, right.
Correct, and, and many, many towns do it in the order that this would be. We just have a tradition of doing a town meeting first and ballot second.
So one, one of the concerns, as Justine raised, is the problem of whether or not the devotees will be educated in that.
Yeah.
So what's the capacity that the town has to, um, put forward, you know, the one or more forums ahead of the time?
Yeah.
Um, to enable that, and do we think that those forums would indeed provide the same kind of information and reasoning that what the town meeting?
It's a similar conversation we have in the school building.
Right.
And, and kind of toeing that line of like how much you're involved in it, cause actually the, the state.
Town, but, but, you know, town be involved in any.
Not, not with the advertising, like you can't convince the voters how to vote.
You can not, but, but at least to put the information out, that's not, you know, we're looking at whatever it is, two million dollars worth of expenditure.
To my point, I think that, I think that my, and you've seen them in action like, um, Colliers, Bill and Chris. I think that those guys have done this, and this isn't their first at Bleachers, it's not their first, I'm, I'm certain that. If we're gonna, at Phil, Phil would certainly be able to come up with some sort of. You know, something exactly along like the lines that you were saying, an education, um. You know, education, um, program, you know, what.
Not the same as preparing for a town meeting.
Exactly.
To be that we're doing it back, backwards as far as which one of the votes go.
And this particular is very much in the public eye, is, is an item that people use frequently, that people are familiar with is. Use yourself and say something related to sewer, which while in portions is not as highly visible, right? So this, this I think is easier to, to set up that information and people, people are eager to learn about what the process will look like relative to. As, you know, maybe infrastructure, uh, in, in other forms.
There'd be a lot of people paying attention, that's for sure. So I'm gonna just put this off a meeting or two.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I can, I can try to get some feedback, um. Um, like, whatever the case, but I can't remember.
But don't we have to set the, um, meeting date anyway?
Um, not this meeting, unless I'm.
No, I mean, it, it's gonna be, it's set by charter, right? So we know what date that is, why don't we just?
But even though annual election is set, let me have a funny.
The annual election is the first Tuesday of May, I believe.
We can, we can set them both and then we can always, we can always.
Well, it would be, would we include the, uh, the debt exclusion?
Yeah.
That's all true.
We, we, we can set up, we can set the dates so that we've done that and we have the dates. Because regardless, we're gonna, us, a school, whoever else is involved, we're gonna have to target specific dates. But why don't we set the dates and just. In, in, in the, in between now and then, just we'll work on what the.
The question is, do we want, are we going to ask to fund a second election? After town meeting at some point within the forty-five day window or whatever it is after the vote that's required. While the debt exclusion.
Right, and I, and I, I, I wanna get.
Or are we going to just.
Yeah.
A, attach it to the already created annual town election.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you some numbers out with that election may cross out.
All right. Let's, so, so let's set the dates. Would anyone like to make a motion for the annual local election in twenty twenty-four?
I will move to set the date, time and place for the annual town election at Tuesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-four, from seven AM to eight PM. In the Fowler School Auditorium, Retiger Drive, May eighth.
Second, and any conversation, any concerns? Nobody? All was in favor? Moving on to item sixty, annual town meeting.
Set the daytime relocation of the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting as Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, beginning at seven PM. At the Fowler School Auditorium, Retiger Drive, May eighth.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Justine. Does anybody have any comments about the setting of the date and time for the meeting? Annual town meeting? No? All was in favor? Dates have been set. Okay, um, so we have the next item is the Green Meadow School Building Project. But on the, on the, on the, um, on Zoom right now is, um. Jen Piccarelli, Parade Lady. And, um, it's not on our agenda, but, um, we know, everybody knows that the parade was changed from, um. Saturday, the third, Sunday, the third, till Sunday, the seventeenth. And I just wanted to see if anybody would like to entertain a motion to officially. Offer our per- permission to hold the parade on the seventeenth, because we usually give up permission for using public streets and ways. And this hasn't changed. It's not on the agenda, it's kind of a last minute thing. But would anybody like to entertain it? Does anybody know of any reason why we wouldn't entertain, um, such a motion? Any comments? All right. So.
I appreciate bringing that up, actually, I, I thought that's true, and again, to complement this particular value. Um, I actually thought, if I had to look back at the January twenty twenty-three application where she first asked, please. If, if you've done a, a range, it's like. I wouldn't have been surprised if she said that they're forward the seventeenth, but she didn't, so you're right, Mr. Charlie, it's asking, getting that permission is. That's correct.
I just wanna make sure we have that set in case there's any concerns. I can tell you that the, um. The date has been changed, the insurance policy has been updated to reflect the seventeenth, so that's in order, I know that for a fact. And everything else is good, and I can't believe she hasn't harassed that veto off of both getting on the agenda, to be honest with you, but probably had a busy day. Anyways, do you have any comments, Jim?
Nope, I think you covered it all. I just happened to see this on Facebook and thought, well, I'll get on there. Um, the mill already. The mill already gave us permission again too. Um, the only thing that's having to be rebooked is we lost, um, unfortunately, a few of our. Um, entertainers, which you were correct about when I spoke with you on Saturday, you had said. You might wanna pick the later date and I'm glad you did, um, because. I'm trying to find a few different entertainers to fill in, but I have no doubt we'll find them.
Yeah, I'm kind of a savant like that.
When it comes to entertainment.
Comes to entertainment, yeah. But anyways, no, I, I appreciate all the, all the back and forth Saturday and everything was great, but, um, so. I guess, would anybody like to make a motion to move this year's holiday parade from December third to December seventeenth? And change the time from three to one PM? Three to one. I was trying to, okay, I was gonna show up at three, so I'm glad it was still, I found out. All right. All right, so great to get the motion and it's seconded, um, all those in favor of the team?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna, we look forward to your parade in whatever shape it takes.
Thank you, and you'll be getting, um, updated emails with all of the information as soon as I. Um, just secure everything and make sure everything's all on stone and I've got all my contracts already.
Perfect, thank you very much. Yeah, great for sun.
Yes, sun, or, I mean, a little dusting would be nice too. Yeah, who thought of rain, who thought of rain, not on December, so. Next, when I come to you in a couple of weeks for the next meeting, we'll put a nice little rain snow date in there.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, um, the Green Meadow School Building Project, I don't think there's anything great, but our last meeting was before our previous meeting. And then we just had the two contracts.
Though, yeah, that was, that's, that's exactly the highlight, so if no one points out this last meeting and we talk about the conference, I'll just.
And I think our next meeting is the eighteenth.
I, I believe you, I don't remember.
I, I think.
I, I think that's, I don't.
I was just saying, I can look it up, yeah, I think.
I think it's the eighteenth, but I'm not, I, I haven't seen anything coming in, so.
But I agree, Mr. Charlie, I don't have it.
Right, so item number eight on our agenda this evening is the correspondence. Any might, anyone like to make a motion about this evening's correspondence?
We have moved to accept and approve correspondences A through B and.
Second.
Okay. Okay, um. Any conversations or questions about any of those items, A through E? No question, um, all those in favor? Thank you. We have a, um, set of minutes to approve. Anyone like to make a motion?
Is there one item for budget development or is that removed? Oh, sorry.
One below. Think they moved it down.
I'll move to accept and approve meetings of November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, as shown.
Second.
And any questions about the minutes, comments, on the twenty-first of November? All those in favor? Awesome, thank you. All right, um, budget development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so we are, we're getting there. Um, in the, in the version that I have on Board Doc right now, you can see that, uh, according to just still estimates and, and. Uh, department proposals and my own sort of estimates, if you will, where we might be for FY twenty-five, both revenue and expenses. You're still in deficit on a balanced budget of three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. Um, that's for, for, for folks following it home on Facebook, I suppose, um, that's not shocking yet. I mean, really, that's kind of how these things play out. Uh, I'm still very much in the information gathering mode. Get all the department requests, get conservative revenue estimates, meaning low revenue estimates. And now's about the time when I start sort of like squeezing the different sources and seeing where, where, where I can try to get that, that number to zero. Um, by the town charter's mandate of January twenty-first, so. Uh, I provided, I provided a balanced budget to select board that I have. So, uh, meanwhile, the capital planning committee is still hard to work. They have been trying to use our online budgeting platform through ClearGov. Um, to, to, um, create like the database, an online database for all the capital requests and, and capital planning with. On the tool, and I'm really interested in what they're doing on that. And, um, and we had a, we had a budget subcommittee meeting the other day and I went over a similar overview of this. And that's where we are. In the very near future, I'll have to start making those decisions, um, regarding some of these line items. Um, and, and try to get that number to zero. Um, not a lot of information comes out between now and then, um, I might get a better inclining of, of where our health insurance number may be. But some of the other items, I may not, so I may not get a better estimate or stated, I may not get a somewhat better estimate. For those social, like high-end items. I am, um, scheduled to meet with the asset bed vocational school tomorrow. So I hope to get a little bit of insight from them as to what, but I, I threw a number out there for an estimate, I think I put four percent. And that's just how, that's how the game works. So I put a number out down so, so I can have something on to work with. And they tell me higher number or lower number, then I can go. That's, that's how this plays out every year. So nothing, nothing significant to report to the board right now, but of course, I'm, I'm open to questions. If, if you have any.
Nope.
I, I have a more general question.
Yeah.
And this is comes with appreciation for all the hard work that's going into, um, working on, on this budget.
Correct.
Um, but my question has to do with something which I'm, I'm sure has, has come up before, which has to do with the. Um, not only looking at what we, our expenses and income are for the coming year, but being able to project ahead.
Right, that's right.
Um, the three, four, five years, which, and now my understanding at the moment is that there's a number of restraints to that. One of which is the fact that the amount of money that we can even think about looking at, uh, projecting ahead is, is a relatively small part of the overall budget. Given things like employee benefits and so forth, which.
Right.
And, and another is a recognition that of course, the, the staffing in town around, um. Finances has been going through some transitions. So I recognize that. And, and those are clearly people who would be involved in, in this process. Um, so what I, what I'm interested in is, um, whether or not, uh, there is capacity. In the coming year or two to try to do more of that. Because my sense is that things are only gonna get, gonna get harder. And if we don't, um, do the very best we can to look further ahead. Um, especially given some of the items that, that we know are on the longer term agenda. Um, I, I'm just concerned, so I, I'm, my question really has to do with what, what, what's the prestige capacity of they, of the town to be able to do that?
I appreciate the question, and, and that's a question that's been posed a number of times over the years. And I am, I am, in this case, I am, I have a little understaffed, and I, and more than I have in the past. The past, at least, I'd had maybe a finance director where the expectation is, finance director would be more harder to me, regards. Now I have relatively. New town accountant, it's new to the role of town accountant, so I'm not trying to overburden him in, in, in his introduction to that role by asking for his partner to do this. So I'm kind of on my own when it comes to the overall budget picture. Um, however, this will be my sixth budget, so I'm relatively comfortable in this year, but to your point, to pivot towards projections, that's, that's a difficult bit. And, and I like that you're pointing out some of those constraints. There, if I, if I were to take an eight percent increase for health insurance, I would, then I'm, I'm just gonna see a higher and a higher, higher deficit every year. Like that's, that's not a useful exercise, just to see how much more, really, like, our conservative estimate, how it's gonna be. And in the end, it may not be eight percent, because it hasn't been eight percent. That's what my consultant tells me to start with every year. So what's, that's kind of a, it's kind of an odd game to start so high, knowing it's gonna probably, more likely to come down. But that's the information I have to go with in projections. So I, I'm sorry, it might be overcomplicating your question, but this is how much I think about it. Um, the finance committee has reached out to me to ask. In, in a similar vein that you are asking, um, what capacity to have in it and can they assist? And I've said yes, because of course I wouldn't deny that assistance. And I, however, let me look, so they're interested in whether we can use the ClearGov platform that we now use for online questioning. That is, might be an avenue, but I'm not, I'm not so confident in it at this time, especially without like a, a staff to be able to help me navigate that. But, um, but, you know, past finance committee members, committee, I think are willing to try to step up and help. Now, now I'm willing to take that, as they've done in the past. So in the past. Um, even this select board has entertained, like, these, these meetings that we've had, where we try to show out projections and whatnot. And it's not always the best news, but it's important for everyone to kind of stay on the same page of where we are and how the cost may be going. Um, but it's not a very clear crystal ball. To your point, like, there's some things that are gonna be difficult to project. And, 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 you know, but you do the best you can. I think at a minimum, those sort of conversations at least make sort of set expectations. And it kind of helps us look ahead, especially with our, like. Debt exclusion, water rates, et cetera, like, how, how are we going? And then, and then, just like that last tribe board meeting together the other day. It's all, it's all money related, how we do with new growth, what can we do about those regards? How does zoning impact new growth, which impacts our budget? It's all water supplies, et cetera, it's all, it's all relative. So I think to make a long story short, um. I would love to have some health projections, projections, and I think the finance committee, um, as recently they've offered, um, I'll, I'll take that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Agree with what you just said, Greg, about the, it helps set expectations, right? And, and when you get into the nuances of the numbers, you know, we give eight percent just so we don't get caught, you know, in, in a sticky situation. For the year over year, where we're putting down, you know, very real numbers that go into town meeting, but for the five year, we're looking at trends. We know there, there are bars on those that could be on either side, so for those, it's more appropriate to do more of a centerline projection, here's what health insurance did over the last. Five awkward five years of the pandemic, it's sort of the study saying, so maybe you wanna go further, but, you know, in normal times, you, you might do a five year, uh, back. And then a five year projection centerline, so just wanna make sure we're not, not. Allowing the restrictions of a one-year necessities to prevent us from doing a five-year projection and having those kind of conversations. Um, appreciate the hope that the finance committee has given before and is willing to give this year. I do want to maintain my position that the town finance staff could be taking this over for the, the long run. Which is in accordance with financial policies, they're really setting up, um. The projection tools, whatever format they look at, if the finance committee is able to put one together this year. Um, and really putting them into a format that is sustainable, so that regardless of who is in the town accountant role or on the finance staff. Is relatively intuitive, if you know the basic ins and outs of, um, municipal budgeting in, in Massachusetts to. To pick up that app and carry it forward. And so I think it's. It's not an insurmountable task to do that, it's not a completely trivial task, but it's something that, that, you know, should not take us that long as an organization. You know, staff, just like for the finance committee, whatever collective group of organization you might call that to, to accomplish. But I still wanna make sure we have the mark that that should be the long-term objective, uh, is to have staff pick up and, and run those projections. Uh, just as part of the regular budget cycle in alignment with our financial policies. I appreciate that.
Yeah. And I, I can't see it being anything other than incredibly important. Um, because of the writing on the wall for me suggests that there are a lot more big expenses coming down. And, and I think people need to know how that's gonna fit into kinds of decisions that we're making now.
Oh, no, I don't disagree, I agree with that too, and, and with a certain amount of like. It, um. To be pliable, to be flexible, like, I think, I think what we didn't know is, um. Energy costs are gonna go, or estimating a thirty percent higher next year. So even if we've gone by the last five years average, we, that would have been blown out. So it, anyways, it's, it is a good exercise, I appreciate it. And, uh, and it really lends us into a conversation every year.
Yeah. Any other questions on the budget?
Yeah, so at the budget subcommittee meeting, one of the, um, comments from the school committee was to ask select board. Uh, thinking about the tribe board meetings that come up, what format we would like to see the school committee presentation take to help, um. Uh, facilitate and affect in discussion, and so that's kind of an open question as opposed to us. Um, I, I stated that meeting that one thing I would like to see from all the groups, town staff, select board finance. And school committee is to see if we can reduce the overall length of presentation to save more time for discussion at the end. Um, that, that, because I feel we're always rushed in terms of hearing member opinions at, at that meeting is my impression, and so what. Uh, and, and other meetings as well, where, where, where those groups get together, but in particular, we're talking about the statutory, February meeting from the. In common, uh, select board.
Uh select board, school committee is also of course invited. So that would be after the full committee. I said I would like to see that and maybe put some of the details that we haven't seen, not leave them out, but put them into a backup deck. So they're there for people to reference and refer to, but trim the presentation down and spend more time uh hearing from the individual members of different groups. Uh so that was my my kind of immediate response, but wanted to bring the overall question back to um everybody else.
And was this in discussion relative to the uh the annual tribal meeting or?
Yeah. I I that's, that's a wonderful idea. That's to to minimize the presentations and and increase the conversation. Because we never have enough time for conversation. We always are looking at. You know, slide up, slide up, slide. I don't think anybody that. We don't need the number of slides that we have, I don't think. I just think, you know.
And so the response of the school committee then was was okay, if that's where everyone go of what we present, what's most important for us to see? What do we want to see from the school committee in that presentation? So we don't need an answer tonight, but I wanted to pose it and to to put it into all of your brains.
We'll take a look at the the what they presented last um in February and I'll watch you.
And I'll definitely take a look at reducing mine too. Because now this would be my sixth time doing it and I think I get quicker every year. But I uh. But I also can, I can kind of read the room a little bit and y'all know me for a while, well beside me. But like, knowing law enough to like, I think I can tell like. This is what you're interested in this, bless all. You've known for six years, you've been hearing our question, you would say one stop in for for, you know, five, six years or whatever.
It just makes perfect sense to minimize the, you know, the um slide to get get to the information.
Oh, and I'll bring it up with some pretend hot foods. We'll talk about like what what might be a good bit.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather see from both sides and I I don't think we do it that much, but you know, I'm not, I'm trying not to be critical of my colleagues. On the other side of the uh aisle personally. But I don't want a sales pitch. Um I don't want, I just want to hear. Facts and numbers, not a sales pitch.
I mean, similar, similar to the conversations that we have with. To be honest, uh you know, I mean, DBW comes and gives us their budget or the library or whoever. I I I think is that what you're kind of getting at? It's like, this is, this is the money. This is what we're looking for. If we can't fund it, that's what happens.
That's when, that's when the sales pitch should be. To your point, like Justin comes in, Mike Noble comes in, other people come in and this is what we're looking for. This is what we need or we can. We can work within what Greg gave us and here's how we're gonna do it. That's the sales pitch. That that should occur in this room. Because my opinion of everything I've read and. Of the early February meeting is that is the presentation of the budget. That is not the debate on the budget. That is the presentation of the budget.
It's it's meant to be a meeting between the finance committee and and the.
Right, to to present, to present the budget, which is fine.
Receive the budget.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's not what it's turned into. Let's just, let's just say that, that's. Not turned into a, you know, a pleading for a music program or a Spanish program or anything else. I mean, and and you know. I'm not being critical of that, of them for that, but. That is supposed to take place in this room at an earlier time. And then when we roll that out on February, it's more for. Everybody in the room. So we have an understanding of exactly what you've come up with based on the input of everybody in the room.
How would you see that played out? Would you, so I owe you a budget um January twentieth?
Don't owe us anybody. You owe the. All the town a budget, right?
January twentieth, whatever. And so like, y'all can hear from your departments, whatever, but like, and they can, they can tell you what they're gonna tell me what they want, which I also do allude to. Like whether I agree to it or not, like inevitably departments are gonna ask for more bodies. It happens every year and I don't often. Even include those recommendations, but I will spell out in my in my budget message, I should say like, this department asks for X, Y, and Z. I didn't include that, but they are asking. And so in a way, you are being provided the department's input, whether or not I agree to it or not. But we've never got so far as to as somewhere, because it's only a couple of weeks in between that January twentieth date, which I will need. And then the, and then the February, whatever date is. It's like, it's like the second or third week in February. Jointly gives like one slide for me. So you don't have to decide this tonight, but if you want, we could have um. Um I could give like um. Go help the, I maybe an overview of like what the departments have asked for, a sales pitch? I'm not sure. I'm trying to figure like how to kind of.
I'm fine with that. I think the to to the point, you know, I think the. The biggest question in that regard is. You know, what, what the schools are asking different from what you're offering?
Okay.
And that's the discussion that should take place in this room as opposed to February. Wh- whatever, whatever the date is. In my opinion. Now, the the budget subcommittee may feel differently. They may feel like they want to. Hear it there, but I I think that that conversation. With every other group but the schools to date takes place either with you or in this room. I think it that belongs in this room. And then when the budget is rolled out, it's a, it's a compilation of everything. It it's already a known. If the school wants to stand up and make their presentation about what they're gonna do with acts. That's okay. But I don't think that that meeting in February is the time for the schools to get up and say, this is what we want and why and and. You know, a a hundred and twenty slides about different individual things they want to spend the dollars on. I just don't think that's the appropriate meeting for it.
So are you testing the school to do that at the budget subcommittee meeting or at a separate?
At a select board meeting. Uh uh yeah, we've had that in the past, a school budget meeting and select board in a school budget meeting in 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 here, yeah? In January or whenever, yeah?
And what happens at the February meeting?
I I think the the, you know, the February meeting has been a a it been a discussion of. Here's the budget that that town is presenting. Here's the school's number within that budget. The school has presented their budget. Here's our, here's our dollars instead on um staff. Here's what we spend on programs. Here's what we spend on other things. And at that, it's not a. And then and then the capital planning and then a conversation with. All the groups about, you know, to your point, a conversation, another conversation. Where we all have the commerce, where we all have the opportunity to talk about. You know, broader, broader things, you know, things like um some of the several reports that um. Well, McCarthy has worked on, for instance, you know, review some of those things or review some of the things that the long range planning people have and other. Other such things, you know, maybe it's, maybe that's an opportunity at that meeting. To have a uh, you know, one final um discussion about the bleachers before the big push for that comes in the um in the spring. But to have the. You know, have the meeting drag on and have us get the opportunity to everyone just go around and say, hi, my name's, my name is Joe. And the meeting be over. It's not.
The focus presentation in February from the school committee? Or?
I don't know. In in I I'd like to have that discussion in this room. Absence everybody that's not. Specific to that conversation or part of that conversation. Um you know, with Jeff, Greg has given us this amount. And whether it's Natasha or um Brian Haft or Mary or whoever. Whoever their budget representative is for the year, say. Here's what Greg has given us. This is what we're gonna need. This is in in, you know, this is what we're gonna need. This is what we want. And this is what we think, you know, to keep things. Where they are today. This is what we need and it's an increase of X over what Greg has come up with. And then. You know, then we we start the work of trying to see, figure out if we can close that gap. But when we get to the meeting on the, on that that Saturday, I think that should just be his. We're at, this is what we're presenting and then, but we know the five of us, the five of them and Greg. And everybody on finance committee, we all understand that there's a gap between. What Greg initially gave and what they initially wanted. And how do we then, like we do every year, find ways, monies, brands. Any way we can to co- close that gap to allow the schools to. Get closer to the number, the amount of dollars that they need.
So in essence, I'm hearing it's like any other department, which they are. So they are a department that submits their budget request. So you you can, you can ask to see any department, which again. It's almost encouraged by me. You can hear out directly from the department that the expert that says, I think we need A, B, and C for their department, whether or not I I recommend that or not. So perhaps. We can see about scheduling the school departments, school committee. To come to whatever, whatever January meeting that is, Jan- Jan- February meeting it is between when my budget submission is January twentieth. And whenever that February twenty budget review is, and we can hear from the school committee. But the 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 other side to it is the finance committee won't hear that, but the finance committee separately doesn't bite the departments to their own meeting.
What's the difference right now?
Uh, I don't know, because I haven't. So my understanding, I heard the committee's meeting on the town. So I think I'm expecting um their budget requests to be hurried.
You've been pretty open with them with the number that that you have here.
Oh, I haven't. This is public, yeah.
Yeah.
I've been very public about this. That number hasn't changed since.
But so, you know, it's.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just better to have it done before we get in that room. And use that time in that room for better purposes than watching slides go by. We got a lot of slides. But did you see the thing that was on the agenda that we took off? That's a lot of slides.
They don't see.
I don't really see that one.
Right.
I gotta bring everybody a pillow that night. Just lay them on the, on the, on the.
We take off.
Uh I can't. No, it's a, it's a, it's a presentation on um, it's a presentation on conservation. It's a lot, it's a lot too. It's it's. It's a huge presentation. Yeah, it was, it was a lot. I mean, I read through it. Wow, it's gonna be a long meeting, but.
It just wasn't quite ready for sure.
But they, but you did finish up the canoes, almost five hundred, almost five hundred uses. I think it was four eighty something. And we cut into your town administration. Oh, the only piece of information in there other than a picture of someone in a roomie. I guess you want to the town minister to report.
But this could be back. I'll 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 connect with um superhead.
But that's just my opinion. So if anybody else doesn't think we ought to cut it back like that, that's that's. Have a voice that opinion.
I I think it can make sense. I I as far as. I don't necessarily think that. The. But I I mean, honestly, it's been that way for for a fairly long time, but. I don't necessarily think that the point of the meeting should be the schools advocating for additional money. Or explain, be because the thing is that we. You know, I mean, I consider us pretty well informed and at this point we've we've. You know, the budget, the budget subcommittee, I'm sure you, you know, you will have heard it. Um I I do think they should come to one of our actual meetings. And then. You know, the the meeting in the in February just discusses the finances of the town as a whole, which is all of it. You know, and I think that as we never really get a chance to have those. Deeper, I mean, you know, and who knows, we may intend to have a deeper discussion and it devolves into, you know. One particular topic over another, um you know, best laid plans, but. I think if we take out. A lot of that, the like the advocacy as opposed to. Just. The budget numbers.
Then then that's sort of my point.
Yeah, you and David are are aligned and I want to make sure we're. Capturing the way that's constructed for the.
Right, yeah, I mean.
Easy to say. What I don't want, but I think we want to be specific about what you do want. And we always want to. Say this is what we're planning to present on the town side and we get the more or less the exact same equivalent format in terms of.
Right, yeah, I'll I'll think about it.
And still maintain that, that, you know, things that the school cover are not necessarily, not like it's just things that the town covers. You need some flexibility. Greg, one thing, you take the the kind of output of this discussion and give it to the finance committee. I believe the school committee is gonna put the same request, it but uh to them, so they should be. Aware, but that's a joint meeting between the slide board and the finance committee. So if you give them, um just tell them this is kind of where our heads are at. And find out where their heads are at.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on the budget for anybody?
I think this was a constructive conversation.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Town Administrator?
That's me. Um.
Here report.
It is a busy month. It always is. December flies. It's always so much luckier. So um. Great turnout the other day at the Simmons Row. It was great. Good speeches all around. It was wonderful and it wasn't too chilly. It was nice. Um I look forward to the menorah next Thursday. Prior to that, it was Thanksgiving and uh Assistant Town Administrator um Stephanie Dougan hosted a training and a little luncheon. Um uh for the Thanksgiving period and it was great. And I really appreciate Deputy Chief uh Toriano and uh Chief and Fire. Chief Wallace for giving some trainings. It was great. It was serious, but they they did it kind of lightheartedly and that was close. And then. Um this Friday, we're going to be recognizing, I don't know if we eat the meat, um but the American Plains Association of Massachusetts is recognizing David Mark. Uh David Mark, always hard to be done, build that aspect of reference. And then the next day um is the Beacon Sand at Talon hosted by W A D High School, also a great annual tradition. Then um. I'll be going to Samuel for Managers Association meeting the following week and then. Oh, yes. We're also gonna do the annual staff um training and holiday luncheon, the golf course December fifteenth. Flying the whole month goes so bad.
The conflict with the seniors lunching?
Uh it isn't a day.
Whoa, be busy that day.
I'm gonna be, I'm the president. And then um. It's just tight. That's how the month is. Trying to get everything in. Um uh I met with liaisons from Sustainability Committee today to go over the. Proposed soul is only the one uh for a vendor to execute the MVP to um grant. That the state, the state issued. And it was, and it's a very, it's a great, good proposal. I'm I'm going over the references right now. Just kind of make sure it's all mapped out. But I I was grateful for the sustainability committees uh cooperation that and I think it's qualified. And then um. Oh, I didn't, I didn't mention the kayak thing, Mr. Chair, so you were ready to bring it up. But uh but Captain Asian Asian is the town planner, um Julia Planner did. Did a great job starting the first, if I recall, the first kayak rental, uh public kayak rental in the Commonwealth. And uh she just shut it down the other day. It was a successful year. I look forward to next year. And um. And uh there's a couple of notes from from the public works, but I also want to point out the public works have been very hard. The department and the town engineer and all the contractors this, this, this month. Uh flat or you know, thirty, forty five days or so because of all the paving they've done. And my say is paving, the town paving is complete, although it is a little confusing. If you look on Glendale, it's really down there. Um I don't know, but she, she would comment probably on the work happening in front of her, but that's ever so. So Ever sources is redoing a lot of the infrastructure there. And the understanding is, of course, that they're gonna be some, to some degree resurfacing that that um street that we've done. Um.
Is there a time limit on that?
But I know that I know, I could go back.
That's the area we just redid?
Yeah.
I love it. I saw, I saw him in.
Hey, it's a lot though. So we got the silence.
Oh, I know, I know.
This is unsurprisingly, this is how things do often work, but um.
Surprisingly, we don't, well, and they don't have to abide by the moral throwing stuff.
Well, and we, but but like any municipality, um public works do reach out to the utilities to make sure you try to sort of like, you try to line it up. So that you're already digging it up. You do, you do the underground first anyway. Um but to go back to my point, the public works have been fantastic and I really appreciate their, I heard what they did. I haven't heard any reports otherwise. So whether it be Tiger Drive or Pine Hill or there's another street they did. So far so good. So um appreciate them and all that work there. And I think that's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks. Um the chair put just a, you know, reiterate about this different stroll. In the Thursday, the the menorah, next Thursday. It's six. They hit six?
You just approved it.
I'm not sure.
And what's the, what time?
Yeah, but it's like that school and I already put my book away.
The time you met on the application, it's.
I have six thirty on my calendar.
Okay, that's fine. That that's probably what it is.
I think it's five thirty. It says five thirty on the application.
Five thirty?
I wonder if it's five thirty to set up.
Oh, yeah, I don't think so. That's probably accurate. You know, I will uh, I will, we can give our agent more.
I'm sure it's on social media.
Yeah, I'm sure. But then and the only other thing is um that I have is, other than the time for that is um. On December eighteenth in this room, seven P M. It's gonna be a rumble. Now we have the senior COA. We have the um Friends of Maine and seniors in a group from the um.
Friends of the Council Asian Council Asian and Senior.
Senior Center Focus Group. So they they're gonna have their first meeting as a group here. And out of that meeting is gonna come. What we've discussed a few times, um heading towards the committee and then. That'll be the first meeting of that group. So if anybody wants to um, anybody wants to come and. Season on that meeting.
For and then they can all come in and throw things.
I think, yeah, they're gonna be ready. My email is blowing up. But anyway, they're gonna have a um. The first meeting of the group of all at one time or how many of them want to come at one time and then. The first meeting of the group volume at one time, or how many of them want to come at one time. And then from that, um, we'll try and figure out who might be a chairperson and. Everything else. I know they, I know as a group, they have a a whole bunch of stuff that um. I'm pretty sure it's the seniors in a focus group has reached out to Josh North and he's given them a boatload of information with dates and times. And all sorts of other stuff on it, which seems way premature considering that we've. Sitting on seventy thousand dollars to pay for thirty five thousand dollars, given that it hasn't actually started yet. But anyway.
Dangerous thing for something that hasn't started yet, to give any type of of indication that we have a. A a timeline and a date, and you know, here we go and whatever.
Oh, yeah.
It seems to be, and I I I certainly appreciate Josh's insight and whatever, but uh. Seems to me to be somewhat premature.
No, he just answered. You're you're right. And he, all he did, I think, was answer a question he was asked.
Yeah.
You know, he was asked a question and he gave a a an answer. You know, his answers are usually long and they're. Yeah, yeah. But but they they're, you know, they're asking him. I don't, I I still remember that to me if he was going to be on the committee. I that's up to him. If you guys want to invite him, I don't care who's on the committee. Because I'm just going to be a liaison to it once it starts. Um, but I don't, I don't know if he has the time or not. Because it's going to be for a while. And it's, I I think. I think at at the beginning, it's going to be difficult to get everybody into. Hurt everybody into the same set of thoughts and ideas. Not that they have, not that they're that much opposed to each other's ideas. But there just really is almost three specific sets of thoughts and ideas on the one project. And so um whoever's on the committee is making a pretty lengthy time commitment, I'm afraid. So anyway, but that's that's Monday night, um, the eighteenth at seven o'clock here in this room. If anybody wants to um come and sit in, if I think if anybody on this board wants to come and sit, and it's more than two of us, I'll have to post it.
Yes.
Okay, okay, wrong. I don't, I don't disagree with I, we've had that discussion. We we way back, we were called out many times because we would. We would be at a parade and there will be three of us in the corner just bullshitting. And then someone will call us out for holding a um private meeting. But that's a, did you post your meeting? I'm like, Vic, we're just saying hello. But anyway, so I think they're all going to post it as a meeting anyways, because they're all intending and and expecting to speak.
I mean, that's, I mean, it's it's really only because I'm leaving.
Right, yeah. So anyway, that's that for me. Um, and then why don't you board member report, Mike?
Uh, just very quickly, I've been with the Sustainability Committee this week, and you were referencing them earlier. And also the Solid Waste um Recommendation uh Committee, I forget their full name now. But the the thing that stands out is is just the number of, you know, just incredibly well informed. People who are looking into these complicated issues. And I know they're going to be presenting information in the coming months to us. Um, and i- it's just very clear that it's been done very thoroughly and and in depth. And I I just appreciate that and the work that they're doing.
All right, better sir? Anything else? Mike, no, David?
I'm good tonight.
Good night, Justin.
Uh, I'll echo your uh thought on the holiday parole. Uh, that was an excellent event. I think very well attended. Uh, but I nature did cooperate at least for that one. Um, so thank everybody who put work into that. Uh, I mean, a lot of, a lot of different people, a lot of different communities. So um, and I think that's it.
Yeah, Jen definitely made the right call.
Uh, no, I'll do the same. Well, uh. Both of your uh sentiments, great seeing uh that many people. Uh, it really felt like uh we're in part of this sport, I think.
Yeah.
What I was like, this place is full, like there is room for more people, but um, it did feel. Um, you know, it had it had a certain energy when you get to that level and that was nice to see. And so uh great work by. Uh, the M B A and W and everybody and and stand down in the fire and rock and get that. Uh, so that was just uh fantastic to see and then get to see all all the familiar faces as well. Um, and then, yeah, but it's up to me to met, but I think you covered that. So that's it for me.
All right, then I think um, I'm taking most.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Again, all to favor. And our next meeting, next meeting is December nineteenth.